Good morning, everyone. It's my pleasure to call this meeting of the Alabama Community College Board of Trustees to Order, our first regular meeting of 2016. I wish everybody a Happy New Year if it's not too late to do that. It's an exciting year that we have ahead of us. I know that the Board feels that there's so many challenges but opportunities ahead of us and we just appreciate everyone's presence here, the participation and leadership by the Chancellor, his staff, all the presidents and their staff, and the faculty and the staff at the different institutions. We just appreciate your commitment, your involvement, and what we're trying to do. Just looking forward to a great year. Last night was a great day for our state, for those boosters of the University of Alabama, and it's my hope that we can be engaged in our coed education in Alabama in the same way that we excel in other areas of our state. At this time, Dr. Rydell, Laurel and Dean Wallace Community College in Antioch will give her indication.
Let us pray. Father of life, light, and love, Almighty, just, and merciful, Creator and sustainer of all that is, infinite source of wisdom, strength, and compassion. We are mindful of your presence with us today. It is through your divinely conceived order that we are privileged to enjoy the beauty of this day, to live and work in our great state of Alabama, and to make a positive difference every day in the lives of our students and the communities that we serve. Bless our national, state, and local leaders. Protect our trustees, Chancellor Heinrich and his staff, and the 11,000 dedicated faculty, staff, and administrators at our colleges. Give our trustees wisdom as they make important decisions for our system and our colleges. Most importantly, keep our students safe as we begin a new semester and a new year, and let your light grow strong in the hearts of all of us who are a part of the Alabama Community College System. Amen.
Everyone will stand and pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
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 Thank you.
The next item on the agenda would be an approval of our agenda for today's meeting. Each trustee received a copy of this in advance of today's meeting, has had time to review it. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Are there any? It was updated ahead of time, so we didn't have it before, so they did receive that in advance. There's been a motion by Mr. Davis to approve the agenda we have in front of us that was updated, but we received that updated. Is there a second? There is a second by Mr. Van Troy. Any discussion on the agenda? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Those who like sign, the agenda's approved. Item five, approval of the minutes of the December 10th, 2015 meeting. Once again, the trustees will receive these minutes in advance, have a chance to review those. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the December 10th meeting?
A next question.
Motion by Ms. Boyd. Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussion? Any additions or changes? There being none, all those in favor of the minutes of the December 10th, 2015 meeting, please raise your hand. Those opposed? The minutes are approved. Item six, anyone signed up to the comment? Sure. There being none, we'll go to item seven. Chancellor Heinrich.
Yes, I recommend approval of seven A items one through four.
Items seven, A, one through four, these were discussed at the work session on December 10th.
Correct.
And I trust that questions were answered, any concerns or questions by the trustees were addressed and have been addressed with this. Is there a motion to approve item seven, A, one through four?
Make a motion to approve items one, two, and four.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nakana. Is there any discussion? Any questions for the Chancellor or his staff on these items? We have, of course, items seven, A, one through four. They are: Item one, purchase of computers, infrastructure committee, equipment, rather, and security infrastructure enhancements and upgrades for John C. Calhoun Community College. Item two is an increase in welding fees for Chatham &amp; G Valley Community College. Item three is group repair at Wallace State Community College, Hansville. Item four, distribution of legislative appropriations for industry circulation initiatives for the Alabama Community College System. There being no discussion, no questions, all those in favor approving items seven, A, one through four, please raise your hand. Opposed? Item seven, A, one through four approved. Next, I recommend approval of item eight, A, one.
If you recall, we discussed the lease agreements with Jefferson Davis Community College during the last month's board meeting and even during the work session. David and Ryan was here if you should have any additional questions.
Is there a motion to approve item eight, A, one?
I make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Ford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Van Troy. Okay, discussion?
Questions that we brought up during the session, where do we stand on indemnification and additionally insurance either for the college or society?
Suppose that if the board recognizes both colleges, it's a, uh, uh, and all of them.
If I read in there, if the trustees took ownership in name, they would be in there.
That is correct.
I think that may have been, was that in the original proposal?
That was added.
Very good. We first discussed this at the October work session and at previous work sessions, so it's coming back to us, so it's been reviewed. Any other questions or discussions about the lease agreements with the city of the board? There being none, we'll go to vote. Once again, we have lease agreements between the community college system, Jefferson State Community College system, and the city of the board. All those in favor of this recommendation, this lease agreement, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Item eight, A, one is approved. Next, number nine, Chancellor.
Very good. Before we go to our orientation, we talked about this once before, a number of our community colleges have leadership programs developing and becoming leaders, and we have one of those leadership groups here today, and it's from Wallace Community College, Hansville. And Dr. Caldwell, do you want to say we're two about through?
Our leadership program has been in place for almost a decade now. It's based on the Alabama Leadership Model, where they learn, develop, and communicate with the community. And each of them, they divide into groups and develop projects, and so they present those projects to cabinet and react on those projects. And without exception, every project presented, our leadership groups have been acting on our college, the college's benefit over the last decade. We're very proud of this, and we believe that you develop leadership at all levels of conversation. And I think all of them who have participated have found it to be very beneficial. We appreciate the support.
Great. Would you guys like standing if you're part of the leadership group? Do you want to stand? We will move into the orientation portion of our meeting. Today, Dr. Doug Jensen, he's the president and CEO of the Alabama Technology Network, will be giving you an overview of ATN, and I know a number of you have had questions about their function, how they relate and interact with the community college system. I think that you'll find this presentation, this orientation, to be very beneficial. So, Dr. Jensen.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to be here today, Chancellor, and to share with all of you today, I welcome you here to this presentation about ATN. I'd like to thank the Board for giving us this opportunity, my colleagues, the college presidents, who we interact with as an ATN across the state, as well as the staff, and as well as the many individuals in the community across the state, from our business leaders that help us during this process. I'm extremely thankful to be here today and to share with you this experience that I've learned about with ATN, and also to share with you the success that ATN has been part of this system. We are truly blessed in this state, speaking from someone who has worked in a variety of other states, to have this type of support from our business leaders, as well as our political leadership, in creating a workforce economic development system that is available to our business partners. So it is a real blessing for me to be here today and to share this information with you. But as you hear me speak today, you'll hear me speak about it from the perspective of a steward. I believe that we are the stewards of the public funds, and we are the stewards of the public trust, and what you're going to hear today is a story about that stewardship and how we have been taking on that responsibility very seriously. There's tremendous responsibility here in that stewardship role, and there's also tremendous opportunity moving forward for us, so I will be sharing some of that with you. And I'd also like to share with you today, as you'll learn a little bit about this, our operational structure with ATN. For the board members, you have a package that is in front of you today. You should have a full copy of the presentation. You might want to pull that presentation to follow along through this process. It might be a little easier for you to see some of the information. And also during the course of this presentation, I'll be referring to some other items that you'll be talking about later on. And I know some of you have the little lean pig that's in front of you today, and I'll show you how that ties into what we are talking about here through our presentation. So I am going to then just share with you a little bit about, I guess we're going to have some. Jonathan, can you assist me with the next slide? Thank you. So this to give you a little outline for a map of how we are going to proceed today. Our presentation today is going to focus on who and what is ATN, what is MEP and NIST, we'll refer to those terms a lot, and the relationship to ATN, the ATN re-competition process that I'm going to be spending a lot of time speaking with you about, the future of ATN, and questions. During the presentation, at any time, please feel free to ask any questions, and I'll be glad to address those with you. If we turn to the next slide, what I'd like to show you about here is about ATN. What is ATN? Well, first of all, I'd like to share with you how important it is to have engaged leadership. The Chancellor and I have spent a tremendous amount of time talking about ATN, and his leadership has been very, very important through this process. I meet with him probably on a weekly basis or every week or every other week, talking about the ATN and the strategy moving forward. But the important part about this is ATN is a vast network, so as you look up there, what you're going to see is the structure of a network that supports the state of Alabama. The most important part is that you'll see there in point number two is applied engineering and technology implementation. This is what the key role of the ATN is, and it's supported by our university partners on the left, as well as the support of our community college system here in Alabama. The important part is working with the existing industries through the state to a network partnership. This is a statewide initiative, and I'll speak more about that. ATN is a structural element of the ACCS system. As you're aware, we recently had a reorganization with the ACS system, ACCS system, and plays, has moved ATN to a predominant role in that structure. The important part also is that you need to be aware is that ATN also has an advisory council that we have to have by statute within the MEP Haulings Guidelines. And actually, this morning, we had a meeting with our advisory council. Our advisory council is very important. It is a critical element in the continuation of our funding. Our chair for our council is David Mullendorf. Our vice chair is Mr. Tommy Lee, and our secretary is Ms. Lynn Lane. As I turn the page here to the next slide, what you'll see is we are ATN. These are the individuals on the screen that make up ATN. There are approximately 60 individuals that serve ATN businesses throughout the state. This picture represents the individuals who are committed to and serve our communities, especially our business community. These individuals, what you will see, there are sometimes the quiet voices behind, you know, I kind of call it the Oz behind the curtain. They're the ones out there making things happen. In attendance today, I have over in the area here, the group of individuals who have helped lead or ATN, as well as some individuals that are out in the field today working. I'm blessed to have these individuals to work with. What I'd like to do is you please stand, introduce yourself in case there's a question that comes up later, and we'll start with Chris in the back.
Chris Lewis, my governor's office.
Joe Yert, attorney general, remember.
Reddian, can you?
Can you do it? Thank you, everybody. In your package, you'll also have a little fact card that looks like this. I carry these all the time with me. And this is just a little summary of the impacts that we'll be talking about ATN. So you'll have that little card, and if you ever need more of these as you travel, if you ever want to share with people about ATN, we have this simple story that we can get to you and provide to you with a quantity to help you tell the story of ATN, especially how it impacts us as a system. The important part of some of this I will go into through the course of this conversation. But on the next slide I'd like to bring up here is this slide shows the development of ATN through the history. The important part here is that if we look at the history of ATN, you'll notice back in 1987, ATN began with five Centers of Excellence, as they were referred to. These Centers of Excellence were associated with Gadsden Community College in Manufacturing Technology, Northwest Muscle Shoals, the focus was environmental technology, Jefferson Davis in Bruton was focusing on telecommunications technology, Wallace Community College in Eufaula, which was focusing electronics technology, and Jeff Davis in Birmingham focused on biomedical technology. In 1995, the group, or the ATN was basically under a 501(c)(3) structure as a nonprofit. There was additional MEP Centers that were added. These included the textile technology, forestry technology, paper and chemical technology, and we also at that point added our three university partners. In 2004 was the next major milestone for ATN when it joined the ACCS system. At that point, it became 15 MEP Centers, or parts of our MEP structure, and they were basically moved from a nonprofit to the ACCS system. The next slide, what I'd like to share with you, I don't have access to my notes on here, so I have to go through a little process here, is the importance of this slide. This slide shows that ATN is part of a vast nationwide network of like-structured entities. This map is also changing as we speak, but this is very important because what I think it shows here is that many of you recognize ATN statewide impact, but these are the resources we can draw upon nationally to support the manufacturing process. This network is under the direction and supervision of the Federal Department of Commerce. It is part of the NIST research structure and function, NIST being the National Institution of Standards and Technology, and the key is that over the course of the history that I just shared with you, ATN has consistently been one of the high competitive states in terms of its services. It is recognized consistently and ranked amongst the top five among MEP Centers across the country. Next slide, please. So what is MEP? We've talked about this term, and I think it's very important. This refers to the Haulings Manufacturing Extension Partnership. Basically, the important part of what does MEPs do, on the next slide, or the slide here you will see, is there are six things that we focus on. We focus on basically that there is one center in each of the 50 states. You'll notice here that there are 60 centers currently, that is being addressed in the re-competition process. There are 550 field locations throughout the nation, over 1,200 staff, 3,200 third-party service providers. We are involved in partnerships, the federal, state, and with industry throughout these national, as well as statewide relationships. MEP nationally is funded at $130 million, and that is a projection for the 2016, 2017, and moving forward. The global competitiveness, the goal of the MEPs is to increase this global competitiveness, and it was basically created in 1998 through the Omnibus Trade Competition Act. It also has the evolving role. MEP is not a stagnant organization within the federal government. Part of the re-competition I'll speak to you about here shortly will show that. So this slide gives you kind of an overview of what MEP is in short. The next slide I'd like to focus on and give you a little bit more information about nationally. So we're going to start at a very high level and bring this down to local impacts for us. The important part here is the nationally, these six are these, you'll see these six points right here that are common strengths. The focus of meeting the manufacturer's short-term needs, but in the context of an overall company strategy. So what we look at here is MEP Centers across the country, look at lean manufacturing, quality systems, process control, engineering services and products and services, growth services for new and expanding markets, sustainability, and most importantly, workforce development. These are part of the key MEP overall program initiatives, and as you can see here, they reached over 30,000 manufacturing firms and completed over 8,000 projects per year. This is all data that's collected at the national level for us. So the next slide, what you'll notice is that this is very important for the MEP as well as ATN. Client impacts is what drives us. The client impacts are basically customer service, stakeholder relationships, et cetera. As you can see nationally, they have served, we serve over 30,000 manufacturers or served in 2013. The point of this service basically rests in these six points here. Job saved, you'll see that there's been 43,000 jobs saved, jobs created, retained sales of $6.2 billion, new sales of $2.2 billion, cost savings of $1.2 billion, and client investment of $2.5 billion. Note that this is all evaluated by a third-party evaluator. These are not our numbers, these are numbers that are basically generated by a third-party independent evaluator to show the strength of the system. As I mentioned here, the key point is focusing on this third-party evaluator. The third-party evaluator currently being used is Force Marsh, and these evaluations are done quarterly. The next slide for you will be what are the goals? The important part here is ATN must align with these goals because we receive the federal dollars. The four major goals that you can see here are to enhance competitiveness of U.S. manufacturers, especially small to medium-sized manufacturing companies, to support national, state, and regional manufacturer ecosystem, to serve as the voice and the voices for the manufacturer, and more importantly, I guess, develop the capacity of high-performing systems and learning organizations at the state and local levels. Next slide. Major structural initiatives that are part of the MEP and the ATN process with here in the state of Alabama. You'll notice that these program initiatives focus around the idea of growth and innovation, sustainability, supply chain, most importantly, technology acceleration. Workforce issues are critical to us as members of the ACCS system, and America makes it. The important thing here is that the key is the aim to help manufacturers identify opportunities that will accelerate and strengthen and grow of competitiveness in global markets. This is our major focus of the ATN services delivery that we move forward on a daily basis. The next slide moves us a little bit more into what is critical. There we are, a critical time in the history of ATN and the system here in Alabama, as well as nationwide. We are going through what's called a re-competition process. The re-competition process will be taking place over the next 90 days. This is critical. If we are not successful in winning the re-competition, we will not be the state's MEP Manufacturing Extension Partnership Cooperative Agreement holder. So there is a lot of work that the staff that I introduced to you are engaged in over the next 90 days that will be critical to the success of ATN. ATN will need to tell the story of the manufacturing ecosystem here in the state of Alabama. We will need to explain to a group of independent evaluators in Washington the importance that we've done. Even though we have a successful history of being a very competitive and highly-ranked MEP, that history will not play a role in the evaluation process. So we must reach out and explain to what our service deliveries are and how we meet that service delivery. MEP, the national MEP, is driving this re-competition process. Next slide, please. So NIST, as I mentioned to you before, the National Institution of Standard Technology, is basically, this is the rationale for the re-competition that I just explained to the Board in terms of how important this will be for us moving forward. The important point here is that the goal is to allocate the funds across the states in a greater concentration of manufacturers. There has been some misalignment in some states where the funding has not been balanced. In the state of Pennsylvania where I came from, there were seven MEPs. The new federal competition guidelines will limit one MEP per state. There is also some competition in some states. Missouri right now is going through a competition. We have reached out to a number of partners and a number of agencies here in the state of Alabama to identify if anybody would be competing against us in terms of ACCS and ATN in terms of re-competition. We have not been notified by anyone that it will be a competition by anyone, but that information does not have to be shared and does not have to be presented to us. So the important part here is that this empowers the MEP Centers to experiment. The reason why they want to go through this competition is a couple of factors, but they realize that there's an opportunity to reach out and address what But they realize that there's an opportunity to reach out and address what the individual manufacturing needs are, especially in very small emerging and rural companies. The demographics and the market understanding is what will drive this process locally. Where do we need to be? Who do we need to serve? How do we reach out to those individual businesses? How do we create that opportunity? This will all be key in our recompetition application that we need to develop. The recompetition application is very technical. It'll be a 40-page narrative. It is limited in terms of its description, but that 40 pages has to be very tight in terms of telling the story and conveying the information. We actually met with our advisory council this morning. Our recompetition team meets on a weekly basis. The chancellor and I brief on this on a regular basis. The group has already completed its first draft. You're going to hear something in terms of what's called an FFO, federal funding opportunity. It was supposed to be released on January 4th. We have not, it has not been released as of 5 o'clock yesterday, close of business. We will probably have about 90 days to draft that recompetition. But we are basing our work currently on the FFO from round two, and we are currently in round three, so we do not believe there'll be many changes, but we want to get a head start on this. We're taking this process very, very seriously. As I mentioned earlier, what will drive this is our relationships with small and medium-sized businesses. Yes, sir?
Mr. Davis, are you operated on the same type of metrics that you had nationally? Is there a target number that you must, you know, meet or show that you're in that direction?
There is a, there's a scorecard, there is a metric, a rubric that will evaluate us. It's basically 70, 100 points, and there are like 10 sections. And some of these sections are equally weighted. Some sections have a little bit of more weight. And there is, and it's really a descriptive narrative. How are we going to do what we do? That's why we cannot use our previous data to kind of make the argument. We have to make the argument based on how are we going to address the needs and what is our role? Keep in mind that all MEPs around the country do not have the same structure. Some are 501(c)(3)'s, some are affiliated with university partners. There are a few that are associated with community college partnerships. So the metric cannot be the same for all because they do a little bit differently. But there are key components like how are we going to address technology acceleration? How are we going to address supply chain? How are we going to address rural and medium-sized small businesses? How are we going to address the urban market? So there are those kind of indicators that we have to write to and that we will be weighted against in terms of the strength of our response. The next slide I'd like to move you to, I think you're already there. So the benefit of the recompetition process, so many times you look at a recompetition, sometimes you think about what are the risks, you know, whether there's a failure. But there's also benefits associated with the recompetition process that I think we can really leverage. And I pointed out some bullets here, as you'll notice there's about six bullets. I'm not going to read all of these to you, but I just want to cover a few of the bullets, especially the first bullet. Increased funding to bring the basically small, the SME here is not subject matter expert. SME in this context is referred to small to medium-sized manufacturers or enterprises. So it's about increasing the funding to those areas. The five-year award, this is the first time we will be, the competition will create a five-year award. That does not mean we will be guaranteed five years of funding, but instead of going through an annual process of writing every year, we will have a five-year award. The other part of this is that if we are successful in managing that responsibility, if we are successful in our stewardship during that five years, we will not have to do another five-year competition. We will be able to file a application for continuation. So the strength of our five-year proposal is going to be critical. And we're taking, as I mentioned, that. You're going to hear me use the word "serious" over and over and over because I think the joke when we say the main thing is to keep the main thing the main thing. And we have to stay focused on this recompetition. Another bullet I'd like to share with you is kind of reset the funding levels to reflect the national recognition and the importance of manufacturing. That's a good thing for Alabama and a bad thing for Alabama. Alabama has been a strong state in terms of its manufacturing. We have been a very highly-ranked and competitive MEP. So our funding level was pretty much imbalanced. There are some states where it was not imbalanced. So the overall net result will probably not be an increase or a decrease in the funding, especially at the $130 million level from the federal government to the Department of Commerce. But it is basically going to stabilize us. It will allow us to be stable, to be able to address, and to be able to be part of the strategic direction of the ACCS system moving forward. The last point I'd like to share with you is the opportunity to realign, the last bullet, realign the center's activity with state economic development strategies. We spoke extensively about that this morning at our advisory council meeting. We have a number of important organizations, Manufacturing Alabama, BCA, the Alabama Automotive Association are all members of our advisory council as well as business leaders. So we speak about making sure that we create that alignment. These key points are going to be critical for our five-year award process. The next slide I'd like to jump to, just wrap up this kind of history for you so you understand where we're going to be going, is what is in the recompetition for ATN? The 1.7 million number that is displayed here for you is basically our current level of funding. Because of our performance and success, we have received an additional $267,000 of support, which is about 15% of that number that was awarded to us because of our success and our ability to meet metrics and make impacts. So the total award that we are actually competing for is around $8.9 million commitment that will allow us, as I mentioned before, to really stabilize ATN and be an integral part of the workforce partnerships and the educational partnerships here in the state of Alabama. The next slide that I'll be moving to here is the regional forums. Just to show you why this is so important. As part of the recompetition process, the critical nature of this process is that they held regional forums. Because I think, Mr. Davis, as you mentioned earlier, I think there's some sharing of metrics. Basically, once they announced the FFO and had these opportunities, they go dark. You can't really ask any questions. There's no competitive advantage. So there were these regional forums that we needed to participate in. The federal funding opportunity announcement, as I mentioned, the FFO will be out shortly. There are four rounds of this competition that has occurred. They are currently in round three. Round three will end in June. Round four will start in July and will finish by the end of the year. By that time, all 50 states will have recompeted. As you'll notice here on the bullet points, the, all interested entities were supposed to participate in these forums. If they chose to, they did not have to, it was an option. We chose to participate. I took a team of leaders with me to Atlanta to participate in the regional forum. I think was shortly thereafter, I was driving back from Atlanta. Jimmy Baker and the chancellor and I had a phone call. I think it was, it wrapped up about 2:00. I think we were having our briefing at 2:30. I was sharing with them what we have learned during that process. There was no other agency from the state of Alabama that was present during that regional forum in Atlanta. From feedback from colleagues that I have around the country, nobody from Alabama participated in Boston or in San Francisco that I am aware of. What this really means is that even though there's no one in the state of Alabama that will maybe compete against us, we are competing against ourselves. We are competing against a standard. And we have to be technically sound in our application. If we do not submit a technically sound application, you will not be funded if you were just a sole provider. An example being was the state of Ohio. A state of Ohio was in round two. For some reason, the state of Ohio ran into a technical issue and was not able to submit their application. And the state of Ohio did not have an MEP. And the state of Ohio was then moved to round three. So they are taking this process very, very seriously. Next slide we're going to move to is, I'm just adding a little bit more detail here. It should be noted that, as I mentioned, there was four rounds of competition. You, i.e. the state, was selected to be in round three. That was a random selection. As you'll see here, on the top part bullet, you'll see the states that we are currently competing against. You'll see the notation regarding the state of Ohio. There is recently been some information shared that there's a couple of other states because of some challenges in round two have also been pushed out to round three. But the timeline here is critical. And I share this with you because as a board, you'll be hearing about this. The chancellor I'm sure will be keeping you briefed. But the FFO is scheduled to be released in 2016. The proposal due date is projected for April 2016. The award should be announced in June of 2016, and our funding should be secured for our beginning of our fiscal year in October 2016. ATN, through the chancellor's help, has been dedicating a lot of time to this. We have set three goals in ATN for this year. It's all based on the Four Disciplines of Execution. I don't know if many have read that book, but it's an excellent book. Many organizations can set goals. Most organizations fail on execution. And the disciplines, Four Disciplines of Execution is a great descriptor handbook to tell you how to implement. So we have been using that as kind of a mechanism for us as a staff. Many of the folks in our staff are reading that book. I don't know, chancellor, at this point, if you want to share anything about the timeline or the urgency that we are, the importance we've dedicated to this?
Well, yes, I, Doug and I have talked repeatedly about the fact that the reading is no choice but to secure this grant. And in the absence of this grant, ATN takes a huge hit and may go white. It's like, you know, if we drop $9 million over the next number of years on this process, it's almost impossible for us to function, and we need to. That said, I think everything you've heard thus far from Doug, I'm very encouraged that we're on track and in fact that we're highly competitive within the state of Alabama. So I'm reasonably confident at this point that we're heading in the right direction. Again, I feel like we're on track. The one question that Doug, you and I have talked about a number of occasions is it appears that the feds are a little bit behind the release of the FFO. Would you assume that that will push everything back as a result? Because I know your timeline is pretty tight. And so it may be that we may not find out until July rather than June. Does that, do you think that happens?
Absolutely. I'm not worried about a week delay. Like, if the FFO doesn't come out for, you know, a week or so, we're not worried about that because we're operating, we're moving forward based on the FFO that was released for round two. I've spoken to leaders in Washington and the FFO. They do not expect to be many changes, so we're just moving forward and using the FFO from round two. And we've also have access to the successful applications from round one and round two. We have reviewed as a team those applications, and we are basically writing moving forward based on the information we have so that we can stay in compliance with the timeline.
Well, that's the thing I might add too. It's maybe a bit redundant, but I've had the opportunity to speak with some of the leadership at the national level over the course of the last six or eight months. One of the things that I hear over and over again is their envious of the relationship ATN has with the community college system. That's unusual. In most states, there's not that kind of relationship. So I see that as a real strength. Certainly, we knew it was a strength, but in terms of this recompetition, I see it as a significant strength. So I was pleased to, was pleased to learn of that.
The next slide I have up here on the screen for you to take a look at is basically ATN's focus on the recompetition, as I mentioned to them. This process basically began in 2013, as you'll see up there on the slide or in your board package, looking at the development of an operational reform agenda intended to optimize this. In 2014, the NIST management directed all MEPs to carefully, it's a systematic way of creating a multi-year process. So this is what drove this. But the most important part is that, writing at the bottom there, ATN must focus intently on the recompetition process from January through 2016. So this is one of the reasons I am very excited about having the opportunity to share this with the board and our audience here today since we are beginning this process now. The next slide is, we're going to kind of move into some of the important parts here of what is ATN's focus in future as part of the ACCS system. So you'll see here briefly our mission and our vision statement. That is also in the back of your fact card. And we're going to turn to the next slide here. This basic slide just gives you a little bit of knowledge about a visual as well as a descriptive knowledge of our distribution of our current centers and locations throughout the state. How we meet our service delivery network, and I'll be sharing more information with you about that. The distribution of our current location throughout the state is important, but as you can imagine, in the recompetition process, we need to revisit a lot of this, and we need to look at how this aligns with the recompetition process. The next slide, please, will show that the, how does this partnership work? What is the point of having this network of service delivery? The key to the ATN partnership process is what do these partnerships mean to us? There are basically four critical parts of this partnership. The ATN serves as an invaluable part of the partnerships in the state of Alabama. As you're aware, we have partnerships with our community colleges, which we are very thankful for. The presidential leadership that we have in our community college, as many of them are here today, are very connected to the ATN centers. But it's about educating, providing outreach, an example, outreach we refer to as was called supply scouting opportunities. Supply scouting can either be an internal or an external, arrows in or arrows out concept, meaning that we could have a business or an entity here in Alabama that is looking for some support from a national network, and we can help them. Or we could do the opposite. We can have a business here that is looking to push out to a national network. We can bring those resources to bear. The next one is connecting the gap. The key here is going to be a focus in the application on technology acceleration and expanding our focus in the technology acceleration. There is a lot of emerging technology that is occurring here in the state of Alabama. And that technology acceleration is a national interest. Not only is it an economic interest, it is also a self-defense, national defense mechanism for technology acceleration. The supply chain stabilization that many of you are aware of from business is critical. Often what I talk about in my presentations is that if we need to shift the conversation from education just being about training to education being an impact on the human talent supply chain, that this nation, this state needs to be globally competitive. And then basically the support of workforce development programs. This is critical. We have a strategic advantage here that we will leverage in our recompetition process because of our relationship with the ACCS system, the chancellor's office, and our college partners. Next slide, please.
Was it AOC with the Congress?
Yes. Ed Castillo and Department of Commerce, we meet frequently. I think Dr. Alford's presentation, I think it was last month, talked about a group of five of us who meet on, basically on a monthly basis or in constant communication. Secretary Fitzgerald, K-12 Leadership, AIDT, Workforce Development, ATN. We're all meeting regularly, trying to communicate and align all of these resources. And that is also going to be reflected in our recompetition process to show how we're leveraging the established investments that are being made in the state to secure our recompetition and to help businesses. So what is driving ATN's focus? So I'm not going to read this small print for you. This is one of the reasons why I had the presentation printed out to you for full scale. But the first four are probably the most important. Samples of services we deliver are lean manufacturing, environmental health and safety, industrial maintenance, and you can see the details here, as well as quality services and engineering. This package is also, I think Kami has shared the packages with the presidents. There's information here that Adrian has, extra packages for the presidents as well if there's any of this information that is needed. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, technology acceleration is going to be critical. One of the key components of the recompetition is the MEP initiative, and ATN must address technology acceleration. And as you can see here, the technology acceleration is accelerating opportunities to leverage in adopting technologies, connection between manufacturers and emerging technologies, and also assisting manufacturing in the adoption, integration, and implementation of these technologies. So you'll see that we talked about technology scouting and technology driven by the market, driven market intelligence, relationships to the Small Business Innovation Research, SBIR assistance, and how this will be affected and driven, new potential markets for us in ATN. And the last part there you'll notice is the National Network for Manufacturing Innovation, and how we tie all of that together, and how technology acceleration is part of that integration. The next topic we spoke a little bit about here is supply scouting, supplier scouting. Another key component of this is it's basically a matchmaker system. How do we align suppliers with supplier needs? So it's a matchmaking system, and it can be a national in its focus. So we can connect individuals, suppliers here in the state of Alabama. We can connect them with suppliers outside the state. We can connect suppliers and manufacturers outside the state to suppliers here in the state of Alabama. the state to suppliers here in the state of ATN. So this information, there's a lot of details here on the slide for you to look at, and do have, I would like to answer any questions when we're done. The next slide I'd like to talk about, be a focus of our recompetition, is basically the supply chain. This all deals with the manufacturing ecosystem. As you're aware, here in the state of Alabama, our manufacturing ecosystem has some big components in terms of automotive, shipbuilder, aerospace aviation sector, as well as manufacturing and other sectors. ATN is proactively engaged with Alabama manufacturing supply chain. We are meeting with organizations. This is basically talking about a top-down overall supply chain with individual manufacturers operating in every level of the supply chain and its company-company interface with the supply chain. We need to make sure that we are helping our businesses in these areas. So at the bottom of the slide there, you basically see the supply chain format that we will be writing to and following in our recompetition. So, the next slide here basically is, ATN is extremely focused on client feedback and stateholder relationships. We are measured by a third-party evaluator. This is so important to our performance of MEP. We go through these three steps. As you can see here, it's a little bit harder to read on the screen, but the first step of the process is the manufacturers only, and we're talking about the MEP compartment here. At the end of the project, we conduct a survey, and that data is collected and forwarded to the MEP. The second step is that follow-up, a third-party contractor, as I mentioned to you, Forst and Marsh, contacts these companies post-completion and basically asks them the impact question, and those impact results are then reported to the federal government, and we receive a report card on those impacts on every quarter. The important part here, once again, is the focus on independent client satisfaction, and it is evaluated for us, and it is reported, and we are held accountable for those performance metrics. So what do those metrics look like for us? This slide shows basically the NIST data or the MEP data only, which is about 58% of the businesses that we serve. These metrics are from 2015 client survey data. 349 clients serve. The net or the total of that, if you bring into all manufacturers, is 601. Jobs created for the MEP portion is 852. Increase in retained sales of 267 million. Cost savings to manufacturers, 41 million. Impact to state economy, 308 million. Once again, these numbers are independently verified and reported. So, the next slide is very important to us, and I'm going to roll through this slowly, but when you look at what our stewardship responsibilities are and how do we measure those stewardship responsibility? Jonathan, if you'd advance for me, please? We look at the ROI, and we look at the return on the investment for the dollars that have been entrusted to us. We're talking about the federal dollars, the state dollars, and the contributions from our businesses in terms of fee for services. For each federal dollar that is returned, for each federal dollar that is consumed, we return back to the state of Alabama $75. For each state dollar that is returned back to the state is $31, and for these fee-for-services dollars that are invested, we return an investment back of $79. The next slide just basically gives you a little bit of alignment of where visually we are currently at in the state. This is our current service model. As I mentioned, this may change as a result of the recompetition process, as we rebalance and recalibrate what our service needs are going to be. The slide that is before you right now, basically, ATN is mentioned in the Accelerate Alabama 1.0 and 2.0 document. Many of you who are familiar with those documents will recognize the terms of recruitment, retention, and renewal. Basically, ATN's role is to recruit and attract businesses and support with commerce, AIDT, and others, retention and expansion, and basically business renewal. This is also accomplished through our partnerships across the state and along with our local community college partners, as well as our university partners. The next slide that I have for you is going to give you a little bit of data in terms of pie charts, and this is talking about our fund allocation, where our operating dollars come from. As you'll see, there are major supporter is the state of Alabama. That has been very blessed to have that kind of support here. I've worked in other states. Other states would be envious to see that kind of support from our local state. In fact, I think the Chancellor and I have sat in a number of calls where people have asked us what the, you know, what the magic recipe is and so forth, and we talked about it's basically a trust relationship. It's a stewardship relationship that the state has trusted and signed the value proposition, and I think we have taken good care of that investment by the state. The next slide looks at, this is basically our ATN client sector breakdown by revenue. As you'll notice here, that we serve about, major revenue comes from about 78%, is manufacturing based. The other is non-manufacturing. This aligns with the function and role of our MEP. We need to have a major focus on manufacturers, but it does not bar us from serving non-manufacturers. This slide is now important. I need you to take a moment and just reflect on this. This slide is based on projects, not on revenue. This is based on projects served, not on revenue. It briefly says that in the bottom, it says project types, but I want to make sure that you realize that these percentages are based on projects. As you can see here, that the major impacts that we are delivering are in terms of lean enterprise and industrial maintenance, followed by environmental health and safety through there. So this is what our current makeup shows, and we will be evaluating this as we move forward in terms of our recompetition. The next slide is a visual to kind of show you as board members where those projects, color-coded, are delivered throughout the state. I know that, I apologize, that these dots are small, but you'll notice here you probably see that 216, for the fourth quarter closing 2015, we had 216 of these projects delivered according to this demographic information. Also, within each of your board packages, we have given you a summary of the projects that are associated with your particular area of concentration or area that you serve. We can also provide you with additional information about that as you're representing your community or you're out and about. That information is in your package. If you need additional information or would like statewide information, we can also provide that to you. In closing, we're coming down to the end of this, and I, first of all, I thank you for your staying with me through this presentation. I know we're covering a lot of material, but this is a very, very important slide for the future of ATN. So, when I look at this slide, this slide says a lot to me, and if you notice that this slide is basically talking about small manufacturers in the state of Alabama. As we all agree, manufacturing is critical to Alabama, not only from a, I mean, just from a sector, but when you start looking at tier one, tier two, tier three, supply chain impacts of that, as well as the economic impact of that. When I was in the state of Wisconsin, one of the largest, it was very much the same as the state of Alabama, agriculture was our major commodity. But when you looked at the wood industry, the wood industry contributed about $12 billion a year to the community. So I did an analysis that if there's as small as a small, little as a 10% reduction in that particular workforce sector, you would take $1.2 billion out of the economy. Alabama and Wisconsin are very similar, about four, over 4 million people, very rural. If you take $1.2 billion out of some of these small communities, you have a devastating impact. So the same type of analysis we are working on for here for this. But what this basically says is that small manufacturers are the foundation. You can see the scattering here. What's interesting is that a lot of that scattering surrounds our urban markets, but it also surrounds our, draws from our rural markets. Many of our individuals who work at these businesses drive in from rural markets. And also, the important part about how this whole concept looks into the manufacturing ecosystem. We are working on some data points right now that will show larger companies. I'm asking the staff to give me some data point scattering of businesses of 100 to 250, 250 to 500, and over 500. This document will pretty much drive, this point will pretty much drive where we are at in our recompetition process. In addition, in your package, I shared with you a document that I think is very, very important. It's called Out of Inventory. If you have a chance to look at this, I'm not going to go through it in a lot of detail right now, but on page nine is a very important page, and I have shared, I've asked that to be tagged for you so you can find it kind of easily. It's a colorful document, it kind of looks like this. Do you have it? Many of us are aware that there is a shortage of skilled workers in the state of Alabama, shortage of skilled workers across the country. We can speak to that kind of intuitively. We can speak to that kind of instinctively. But what's interesting on page 11, page 11 gives you a, basically, a quanta, a qualified measurement system to show what the impact is. And what it does is it focuses on worker shortage, and we all know that worker shortage is an issue. But how does that really measure? How do we monitor that? How do we talk about the economic impact or economic loss? Well, what this article talks about is that, one of the first points talks about overtime. How are we compensating for this worker shortage? Most of the way we're compensating for it by increasing overtime. Well, the challenge with increasing overtime is overtime has additionally been used to respond to peak responses in the business cycle, but if you're using your overtime just to operate your business or stay afloat, what is the cost of that? So if you look at this model, and the reason why I share it with the board, it kind of gives you an opportunity to quantify what this impact of worker shortage is in terms of how do we measure it. And what is important is that you look there, that if you had overtime costs, increased overtime costs by 12% for a business that is around 500 million or less, or I'm sorry, at least that number, you have about a million dollars in increased costs. What does that do in terms of other impacts? Well, it increases downtime by about 10%. It affects your, decreases your cycle time by about 8%. The net result on the overall operational equipment effectiveness is then becomes into play, and many of you in business understand those performance metrics in terms of your overall business model. If you take those numbers into it and you look at that the profit-loss are a margin, a business margin of less than 8% or around 8%, you're talking about a potential loss of $45 million in revenue. If you look at that number in terms of profit margin, that's about $3.6 million in unrealized earnings. When you take into those factors and you keep drilling those down, which I think this article gives to us, is it shows that you're losing approximately 11% of annual earnings. How many businesses right now can afford to lose 11% of annual earnings? So when we look at, we talk about this skilled worker shortage, it is really a two-pronged attack, and I think that is where the ACCS system is uniquely positioned. Because of our educational system and the efficiencies and effectiveness that we can bring through the ATN system allows us to really help employers address that. That's why I shared with you the Lean Pig. If you look on the back of the Lean Pig, what you will see is basically your eight waste detectors, and that's really what ATN focuses on. So in addition to that article, and if you look on page 13 of that article, article 13 shows you what are some of the metrics on the far right-hand side that can be used to show the impact. So as we're talking to businesses and we're talking to political leaders and we're communicating to our stakeholders, beyond just saying we don't have the skilled workforce, these are the impacts of not having that skilled workforce. And as you can see there, as business leaders, these all make tremendous sense to you. Product cycle time, downtime, inventory, scrap rate, overall equipment effectiveness, order lead time. Those are all indicators of lost annual earnings or lost economic impact for the state of Alabama. So then those two slides, go to the next slide, please, Jonathan? I just shared that information with you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to talk with you. And to the next slide, please, and I'll be wrapping up here. So, what have we accomplished today? My important part here was trying to take you on a journey to give you a history of ATN and the importance of ATN, and the stewardship role and responsibilities it comes with being ATN within the ACCS system. Your takeaway in your package, and you'll see that information here on this slide, there are your top projects in your area. We talked about some of the open enrollment that is going on, the investment Alabama dollars that I haven't spent a lot of time speaking about today, about $500,000 that we use to support small manufacturers in the state of Alabama. We talked about our advisory council, the presentation today, and basically the direction that we are moving, and the support that we have been receiving from the Chancellor's office in moving forward. So, how can ATN help? That is going to be the question that we're going to be asking. It's the question we're going to be evaluating, talking about how we incorporate that story into the recompetition process, and I am confident that I will come back here probably in June or July with the Chancellor, and we will acknowledge and notify you that ATN has been recompeting successfully, and we will be the state's MEP for five to 10 years. Chancellor, before we open to the questions or any comments you'd like to make or any...
We've covered it, covered it well, but I see there may be some questions from the board members.
Absolutely, so.
Just a couple of questions. Any of the affiliates, has ATN worked with other states or as a recipient or provider?
I don't know about the history of, I know we have partnerships. We go to Tennessee, and I think we've been to Mississippi, and we are working with some of the auto. I just received a call, I think it was from Tennessee Nissan. They want to come to the automotive summit that'll be here in Birmingham. I'll be speaking at the automotive summit. I think I have an hour presentation, I think is set up for, and so we're looking at that collaboration. I think the other thing that we need to really look solidly at through this recompetition process is ATN's capacity to use more third-party contractors, and some of those third-party contractors hopefully will be able to provide us the services from here in the state of Alabama. But I think that we also have to look at, if our business is needed, how do we connect them with those third-party contracts, but run those contracts through Alabama ATN to make sure that we can control the quality and the impacts, because we will be held accountable for the impacts.
One other question, too, with respect to the ROI's. The return on the federal dollars is about two and a half times the state. What's one of the...
Right now, under the current law structure, is that the, we have to have a two-to-one match. So the mathematical formula that we use, we take the total amount of dollars, in that case, we take the state dollars, we minus out, or we take the total impacts, we minus out the state dollars, which would be twice as much as the federal dollars because it's two-to-one match, and then what we do is we divide it by the number of state dollars, and that's how we calculate our ROI. So the federal ROI, what we do is we take the total impact dollars, divide it by one-third in this case, less federal dollars, which drives our ROI up because of the federal dollar match. Other questions I may answer. Well, thank you very much, sir. Yes?
Oh, talking about the ROI. So you're specifically looking at, you know, productivity rates, I guess they buy it to judge it by here, you're measuring that and comparing to your best knowledge coming up with the ROI.
Right. Recently, there was a change. There used to be a narrative part of the impact statement where we were, when they did, when the independent contractor did the third-party evaluations, they would also ask some narrative questions, more statements in terms of impacts that could be measured, and those were reported to us. The recent change is, if I recall, it took effect, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody out there, took effect this year, is now they're just doing the numerical impacts. They're not asking for that narrative any longer. They're really trying to tighten it up because some states, I think, were able to tell a better story than their data would show, and what they really want to do, they want to equalize or level the playing field, so they're really just looking at the quantitative metrics numbers, which will stand up very strongly. Any other questions I may have, sir?
The FFO you talked about, this is a pool of federal money that is based on competition awarding and varying amounts in different states, or how is that?
Sure. The FFO stands, basically, as the RFP. It's the Request for Proposal. It's the guideline. The $130 million, which is what the federal government is, the Commerce is asking of the federal government, which is what it looks like it'll be awarded at. There was an ask for 140 million, but it looks like they're going to get 130. The House and the Senate settled on 130. Based on that, they take a look at the $130 million, look at a formula they have that distributes those $130 million over the 50 MEPs, and they look at the percentage of manufacturing, and they try to equalize or calibrate that out. We've been pretty successful, and because we've been as successful, our number is about that 1.78 million. That's probably what we will be awarded. That's what we are recompeting for. That's why the five-year application... why the five-year application looks at 8.9 million as a total award. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Please, on your advisory council members, I'd like you to look at it somewhere west or something.
Sure. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to be here today and share with you something that I think is very exciting, something that is unique as a community college system throughout the country, and ATM is looking forward to being a part of the ACS system and serving your businesses throughout the state. So thank you very much for the opportunity. Have a great day.
I'd like to introduce a couple of new employees to the system office. I think a couple of them are here, one or two maybe in training. Kimberly Atkins is in our Delton area as an accountant, fiscal. Can we be there? Welcome. Sarah Oze, administrative assistant to System Development and Strategic Advancement. Sarah, welcome. Guy Patterson, database administrator in IT. Corey Rambo, Assistant Director of Fiscal Services in the fiscal area. Welcome to each of you. Glad to have you here. And one final word, just would want to draw your attention to next month's meeting. We initially had scheduled it for Faulkner, since the legislature will begin its session, we pushed that back to another time, sometime later in the 30 months we go through the state's session. So next, next month we will meet.
Thank you, Chancellor. I'd also like to welcome Kristen DeCroft, Education Advisor. She's taken over for Jared White. I know there's been kind of a transition, and she's been there for a few months, but we had conflicts with K-12's Board of Education meeting and our meeting, and we're so glad to have you, we appreciate Kristen. Appreciate the governor's leadership. Anything else to come before the board trustees have any comments or anything else to bring before the board? No, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second. I was a favor, so you might by raising your hand. We stand adjourned. Thank you for being here.